Morning, today is January, or June, the second. We hadn't made it to January quite yet. And we're here today for a special budget workshop session. The meeting will come to order. Mr. Pelton, would you please leave us an indication?
I do follow you, thank you. May bless with life. Pray that you'd be with us now as we conduct the business of this county. Give us the wisdom and guidance that we need to do what is fair for all concerned. Forgive us worthy failure, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, budget workshop to review and discuss the past, present, and future budget needs and concerns for the following departments. And before we begin with the justice of the peace, Angela, would you re-present the information that we received from the appraisal district?
Yes, sir. On May the nineteenth, Alex Stevens with the appraisal district came by and gave us some estimated property values as of April the thirtieth. And there is a loss in these estimated values. He estimated our values at being two billion, seven hundred and forty-three million, six hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and two dollars. And then our rolling stock is not available at this time, so we used last year's amounts, and it's ten million, eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars for a total of two billion, seven hundred and fifty-three million, six hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars. Currently, our tax rate is fifty-six cents, so that's equivalent to fifteen million, four hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. Our estimated tax, frozen tax loss is three hundred and two thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars. So our estimated budget tax revenue, including our frozen tax loss, is fifteen million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Last year, our budget amount was fifteen million, seven hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars, which is equivalent to six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars, loss in the tax revenue for the upcoming year.
And that's estimated. Alex Stevens, that's the worst-case scenario. It should get a little bit better than that, but he says it won't be much. So that's where we start with working on the budget, is trying to recover roughly six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. We know that that's not going to happen with all the budgets we're working on today, but we're just hoping to each little bit that we can take out of the budget, that we can try to recover as much of that as we can. So we'll start now with the justice of the peace, and we'll start with precinct one. Judge Ingram, how are you this morning?
Good.
Good. You submitted a budget that is exactly the same as last year. And I don't have any questions about any specific line item. I don't know if any of the other commissioners may have anything?
I don't.
Do you have anything you'd like to bring up, or?
Only if you're planning on cutting some of my line items.
No, sir, I don't see anywhere that we could.
Good, I don't see any fat to cut. I think you ain't cutting meat.
Yes, sir. I agree. So like I said, I don't anticipate this will take very long. And I don't anticipate we'll find a lot of money to help, but I think it's important that we include everybody, and that's why I wanted everybody to. So if nobody has any questions, we'll move on to JP number two. Judge Brewer, good morning.
The only thing that I wanted to change is the travel expense for training. I really want to put thirteen fifty on there.
Yes, sir.
And after speaking with Judge Mitten, she explained to me how much it normally costs for myself and the court clerk to go to school. And I think she said it's eleven hundred, so I can go down to eleven hundred dollars on that. And that should cover myself as court clerk in training for that physical year.
Now you have a new court clerk, so that's still covered?
Court clerk got to be starting, so technically, we're going to be, you know, my budget will, should go down about, I figured it's about seven hundred, seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars just with the court clerk, you know, salary going down and the court relief, court clerk relief salary going down a little bit. That totals about seven thousand, three ninety-five. But everything else, I'd like to leave the same.
Are we implementing car allowance and the travel?
It's in the travel allowance, which is line number two-two-five, seventy-two hundred dollars.
My understanding, anytime an official drives outside the county, they're eligible for travel expenses to be reimbursed.
Yes, sir, and that will come out of the line item that's labeled, the one that the judge was just talking about, travel expense.
Right.
Which is actually, should be travel and training, or training and travel. But anytime they travel outside the county, then they'll be able to charge mileage at the IRS allowable rate.
I would recommend on precinct two, Charles is okay with this, to maybe being where precinct one is, just to make sure we don't go over on line item. Chris is at twelve seventy-five. And that way, because your budget is going to be, is being reduced because of the new hire.
Right.
And so just keep you up a little bit, and that way, that way you're not backing, you're asking us to add money to it if you have to go to an additional school, or if cost runs over.
Putting on his twelve seventy-five.
That would be my recommendation to the court, just to make sure we don't go over.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing.
Thank you.
You all right with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Well, that's going to be a minus seventy-five dollars.
Judge Brewer, we have, on the line item for your clerk, we have thirty thousand, four eleven. Does that, that will include her pay and a relief pay, is that correct?
The clerk starts out, to my knowledge, at twenty-eight thousand, two thirty-nine. I think that's where they start out at. And the relief fund will be twenty-one seventy-one, which is basically thirteen fifty-seven or thirteen fifty-eight an hour with the hundred and sixty hours, you know, that's with the vacation or sick time that that clerk might have to take off. That's the lowest that any of the other budgets will be for JP's.
Is that figured in here?
As of right now, it's all in salaries at the very top line. It's not divided out, but he divided it out under his column. So he's estimating thirty thousand, four hundred and eleven for his clerks.
Okay, okay. I don't have any other questions.
I got one, Charles. On your equipment expense lease, going back and seeing that you've used three hundred and fifty-six, eighty-nine this year. In the past, it was six hundred and something. Or is that normally what it's going to run? Do you need fifteen hundred dollars on that?
Yes, because what's coming out of that now is my copier. And it ranges from sixty, I mean eighty-six dollars and something a month, and I had one month was a hundred and eleven dollars. So that's going to come out of that line item, my copier.
Okay, so that's going to be in that line item?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I don't know where that came out in the past, but I do know that it's coming out of this line item now. Since January, I don't know where it came out of in the past.
Might have come out of mine.
I had it.
And you want to add it back?
Do you have anything else, Judge?
I don't have anything.
Anyone else? Move on to Judge Hall. He's handling the jail right now and asked if he could be excused. So we'll just kind of review his, and if anybody has any questions, I told him I would come back to him and report it back to the court.
He's not asking for anything?
He's not asking for anything, though. In fact, he went down a few hundred dollars. Yes, sir. Move on to JP number four, Judge Walker. He couldn't be here today as well, but he's asking for the same budget that he's had in the past. Anybody have any questions with that one?
I don't.
You do? Okay.
How come we give him more for rent than we do the rest of them?
Because that's the contract we have with the people where he's renting from, ever.
Have we ever pursued moving somewhere else? Because that's, I'm trying to find it. That's kind of high. And I suppose he's been there all along, I mean.
No, he hasn't. He was in the county building for many, many years till it brought it down, which was actually the old commissioner's building. And so we have him and the JP and my office all together, same deal.
Okay.
And that's what that is. And it's about the only spot in the state. Now, we do have a vacant spot if we want to build a new building. But I'm not proposing that this year.
This ten thousand covers your office space and his?
And the constable uses the same one that I do.
That's all I got.
Anything else? All right, we'll move on to JP five, Judge Mitten. Good morning. I've made a new copy of a budget that Missy made some changes yesterday. I'm sorry, Judge Mitten made some changes yesterday. I want to make sure everybody got that. These two, I don't remember what you did. Yes, sir. These two changes were made yesterday. I'm sorry.
Two changes that I did was on the telephone. In this current budget, I had to ask for six hundred dollars for a cellphone allowance. I have decided not to do that one, taking that six hundred back out, bumping it to thirty-four hundred.
Do you have a sale, a county sale?
No, it's a personal sale, and I'm glad you do, it's not reimbursed.
On this one, Judge, is this the one you said you'd give us?
Yes, sir. It's got two handwritten amounts.
Yeah.
The two handwritten amounts were the two changes.
What's the requested total twenty sixteen budget?
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
For JP five?
Yes, sir.
Is it going to be the one ninety-two, nine eleven, less eight fifty?
Well, we don't have, we don't have any of the salaries or fringes figured in up here.
Will they change?
At this time, they're not. There's no request to be changed, unless there's any request from the court to make any changes.
Okay, if there's no request, looks like then basically.
It will go down a little bit, because she had, her travel expense last year was twenty-five fifty, and she's reduced it to eleven hundred. And her telephone amount was four thousand, and she's reduced that to thirty-four hundred.
So actually.
All of the other amounts have stayed the same.
Actually, it's going to go down another fourteen hundred and fifty dollars from what we had.
But my question is too, do you want your travel expense to be the same as the other JP's? Or do you, it would be just to cover you if you do have to send somebody, or you have to go somewhere?
The reason I bumped it back to eleven hundred is what it has been in the previous years. And I know that we have sent a judge and two court clerks to school on eleven hundred dollars. I know that my part-time court clerks will not be going to school, so I, that still leaves money in there for me to go to my mandatory school, the court clerk to go to school. And if I choose to go to a legislative debate or anything, I feel that eleven hundred dollars will cover that.
Okay. Do all the JP's have cellphones or stipends?
Stipends for your JP, for the cellphone, for us?
Yeah.
I think there may be some that do, but it's not uniform.
You know, I would recommend the court that if they're on a twenty-four-hour call, that the county ought to provide for them.
I would recommend that we do not.
And that's what I would recommend. In fact, I would recommend we do away with all cellphones, county-wide.
My reason would be, I mean, just because, you know, it ended in the midnight when we first had them, and it was a luxury, and everybody had them as a big expense. Now everybody's got, you know, I mean, I would definitely like to take the county's money, but.
Well, but here's the thing we run into. Here's the thing we run into. If you get sued and you get subpoenaed, all your text messages are getting, go through, all, if you have a smartphone, every website you've ever visited. Because this thing going on with Hillary Clinton shows that there's no separation between, like, if you're using your personal phone for county business, then if it's subpoenaed, then they're going through all your phone records.
Hazard of doing business, I think. Because here's, when you have a county phone, I mean, you can't tell me that no one's going to cross that line on their county phone also. You know, it's going to happen either way, just because it's convenient, it's a phone.
I think if you look at case law, and I don't say our county attorney here. If we do not provide a phone to them, or a stipend to them, your personal phone cannot be subpoenaed.
Well, I have sat through training through TAC where a road and bridge personnel was, had to answer their phone when their foreman called. And then when they quit, the county had to go back and pay their cellphone bill for X amount of time because the commissioner made it standard operating procedure that their personal phone be used for county business. And so, you know, we may want an opinion from TAC on that. Everything with cybersecurity, and I don't think you have privacy if you're using it for county business. That's my personal opinion. I think if you get sued, you're going to have, you're going to have to hire an attorney and pay somebody to prove that your personal records can't go through. But I did accept that training with TAC, that when that employee separated, that county had to pay that employee because they use their phone for daily business.
Well, I think as long as we have it in our policy manual, that each employee has to provide a number where they can be contacted twenty-four seven, whether it's a landline or a cellphone, it is neither here nor there. And we should not have to pay for a landline or a cellphone either way. As long as we have it in our policy manual, that, and I'm just kind of going by how it was at the sheriff's office, every deputy has to be available to be contacted at a phone number, but every deputy's not paid for their cellphone.
The deputies themselves use a cellphone more than anybody that has a stipend with the county, and they don't have a stipend. So if we're going to start that, we're going to have to issue a phone to everybody out there.
Well, I mean, that's up for debate, but I think your elected officials who are on-call and mandated is different than a deputy.
I disagree.
Right, and we can respectfully disagree, but that is my opinion. And then, and then where do we get into it legally about making an employee use a personal cellphone for county business? Because that's what it's going to come down to. And then when you get into cybersecurity, eventually we're going to look at IT. We have to look at keeping our system secure, going to one system possibly. And so anyway, that's just my opinion, you know. I mean, I would respectfully disagree.
And I would respectfully disagree as well. But, and I will say this, if we do it for the, for any one, I would say let's do it for everybody.
Well, and I disagree with that, because.
Every position is not.
Every employee?
No, everybody that has to use a phone, like Chris is talking about, you know, a road and bridge worker having to use their cellphone.
Right, well, mine, mine cannot use their cellphone, and they are required to carry their radio with them. So if they use it, they're violating my directive to them. They've had to sign a piece of paper saying they will not use their cellphone on company time.
I think it's one thing if we have an employee that has to be contacted by their boss to come to work. It would be something else if we were having an employee schedule materials to be brought in and things like that, and handling county business from their personal cellphone.
Right.
Then I would expect that they'd need to be compensated for that.
Well, that's my thing, I mean, our JP's, and you know, and if they don't want it, you certainly can't force them to take it. But if we're going to require them to be on twenty-four-hour call, then I would think that would be a responsibility of the county. It's just like people paying out of pocket to go to non-conferences, that doesn't make sense. If they're making the county better, then we ought to pay for it.
Do we have any JP's that are not on twenty-four-hour call?
No, sir.
I thought all elected officials on twenty-four-hour call.
Well, that's my point.
Now, you may say, okay, the treasurer or the county clerk or something, they're not on twenty-four-hour call, but I would assume most officials are on twenty-four-hour call.
Well, that's my point, and I mean, it's not, it's not.
If they're not, I wish my constituents knew that.
Right. No, I agree with that.
Yeah, so.
Does constables get cellphones?
No.
No, sir.
Y'all on twenty-four-hour call?
I mean, we're fixing up.
All twenty-four hours, yes, sir.
Well, I guess my question would be, why don't they have a cellphone, a county cellphone?
Because when we asked, when I was a constable and we asked for it, we was told no. That's why we don't have it.
They paid twenty dollars in our vehicle expense for a cellphone. And that's what they say, that's going to be on.
That's what the county, that's what the county pays?
They gave us twenty dollars, but we were trying to get a phone, cellphone. And basically, we gave twenty dollars toward your cellphone and we run it through your car maintenance program.
Is the vehicle allowance? I remember something about that.
Oh, so we, there's something, there's something in the vehicle allowance to cover your cellphone, is that what you're saying?
Twenty dollars.
Okay, well, I mean, yes.
I mean, I never seen it on paper, but that's supposed to be there.
And I think something else we could look at too is, and I know the majority of the court is in agreeance with Commissioner Kirkland that we should provide cellphone allowance to certain ones. But if we go that route, or stay that route, I think something that we need to look into is making it uniform across the board as far as how much. Because just for instance, in the sheriff's department, I was a patrol supervisor, and I had fifty dollars a month, whereas an investigator got a hundred dollars a month, so who makes that decision there?
Sheriff does.
Yeah.
So I mean.
But I would say it should be the same across the board.
Well, I agree too, and then, I mean, you know, at some point in time, I'm not going to use my personal cellphone for county business. I'm not going to do it. That's my, I carry two cellphones. I got, I got one that I pay for, and I got one the county pays for. And I keep my business, I don't interfere with the business. On my personal calls, I use my personal cellphone, and on my county phone, I use my county cellphone. Same conversation I had with my foreman when I got elected. I said, you understand that under Open Records Act, every phone call you make off that county cellphone can be, a constituent can ask for it, and they can go through your phone records, find out who you're talking to, and if it's not county business, you're going to be held liable for it. And that keeps them honest.
Can I just say, I mean, if you guys want to give us money, we'll gladly take it. But it seems, and maybe I'm wrong, but that this conversation is counterproductive to a budget-cutting meeting. Because we're talking about adding money to everybody's, not mine, right?
Well, and me as a commissioner, the way forward is not necessarily backwards. This county has grown, there's discrepancies between what one department and another department's doing. It's not uniform, leads to poor morale, leads to complaining. And I think if we're going to move forward, we have to move forward. And maybe the answer is not to cut your budget. Maybe the answer is truly to increase your budget to cover a cellphone. So when you get a call from DPS or whoever at two o'clock in the morning, you're taking care of county business. I don't think that's, I don't think that's a perk or a luxury. I think that we're providing you with something that you should have. And so I'm not, I do believe that we have to manage our budget. I'm just one out of five. But I disagree on our way forward as a county. Just cutting the budget is not being responsible.
Well, I don't think we're just cutting the budget to cut the budget. I think we're looking for areas that we can make savings, but there's also, and this is not just a budget-cutting session, it's for people who come in and tell us their needs. But I think a constable, or a JP, or a commissioner, or a judge, or sheriff, anyone that's on twenty-four-hour call in order to conduct the business of the county ought to have a county phone. They should not be forced to have their own phone. Now, if the court, and I remember some years ago, we made an agreement with the constables that we'd included in their travel allowance, which to me is fine. Maybe include it with the JP's, but I do think they need a county phone. You can't expect a person to furnish their own phone to conduct county business.
And then, you know, with what Charles is saving, just at precinct two, we probably pay for every JP to have a phone. I mean, as far as shuffling money, because you're saving seventy-three hundred, is that what we said? Right? So I mean, the money's there.
So you guys are about to make a motion for that?
No. But I do think, you know, I have, I have a personal goal of seeing morale get better. And morale is not necessarily bad, but not necessarily good. And I would not see it uniform. And I don't think that it's responsible just to say, cut, 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 cut. And I may be the most conservative person on the court. Me and Kent could probably flip a coin.
I don't think it's responsible to cut, cut, cut either.
I still got my phone.
But I would say this, the only, the only other way, unless we get a lot of new business revenue in here, the only other way, and I realize we're on record, is increase the tax rate. And before me personally, I could vote for an increase, I'm going to make sure we cut everything we can cut before I would vote for a tax increase.
I don't think anybody would disagree.
I think you need to cut everything that's reasonable to cut. But to me, it's not reasonable to expect an elected official that has twenty-four-hour responsibilities to furnish their own phone. I mean, that's just a personal opinion.
Well, I think what Judge Ingram is saying is everybody's got a phone anyway now. It's not, it was a luxury back when, but now everybody, every teenager at school's got a cellphone.
Yeah, it took off some of them.
Yeah, some of them. And so, and I agree with where he's coming from, that everybody now has a phone, and as long as you have a number that you provided where you can be contacted.
But is that a number that you want to give out to all the other officials and the people that need to get in touch with you and the public?
I don't give it to people in the public. They can call the office.
You don't deal with them? I deal with them at night when they got a horse dies, or when they got a tree down across their.
Well, I mean, maybe our job descriptions are a little bit different, you know, to where maybe a neighbor would be calling you in the middle of the night because a horse is out, you know?
A JP might not be called.
Exactly. Well, it would be called, it would be called by law enforcement, or someone that has access to that number. I don't know, man.
Well, and I think too, the liability, you know, just something to consider. You know, Hillary Clinton's in the news because she's using her personal server, her personal phone, her personal BlackBerry, and it's going to be a political issue. And everybody here signs up every four years to run, and it's going to become a political issue. You know, God forbid you have something on your cellphone you don't want someone to see. Or you criticize somebody that's in the community through a text. And now all of a sudden, it's out there. Because it was your personal phone, and you didn't think you could be sued over it.
Do constables get called out at night?
I do.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, I imagine you get these barroom fights and family scrapes and the phone rings.
Who calls you then? It's law enforcement calling you, or?
Yeah, I get called from the sheriff's office.
Well, from the sheriff's office, constituents all over my precinct too. I think my cellphone's on a billboard somewhere in North Hills, but I'm pretty sure.
Well, I can tell you this, every kid at West Horton has my phone number. I make sure everybody aware of my number.
So again, you guys want to vote to, for us to have an increase?
Well, we can't, we can't debate this all day. I for one say elected official ought to have a cellphone if they want it, a county cellphone.
And I'm going to agree with that. I don't know that we could take that action today, but.
I think we can come to a consensus.
Well, that's a consensus we're right in.
But I'd be against that.
It's not a.
I'd be against it.
Right.
Alan?
I pay for my own cellphone, so.
I do too. I don't get an allowance. But I'm not, I'm not using that to.
Whenever, just for the record, whenever the commissioners have their budget day sometime later on, I'm giving mine up, so, my cellphone. I do give, I do.
I'm not giving mine up, because I'm not answering all those calls from constituents on, from big ticket retreat and all them people at night and stuff. I leave my cellphone plugged in by my bed twenty-four hours a day when I'm, yeah, I'm not paying for county business.
Right, and I agree, I agree.
All right, are we through?
Now, if we're talking about smartphones or something, that's a whole different deal. But if you're just talking about plain communication, the public needs a way to get in touch with you now.
Well, I know this, and this is, like I said, working with other agencies and stuff. I worked with DPS, you know, they furnish, they have like, they furnish a DPS phone. It's not, we could have a county system of phones. It, you can go to AT&T, you can go to Verizon, or whoever, and you can actually get, in other words, I wouldn't be paying my bill, the county would be paying the bill for that particular phone. It would be a particular phone number, and all their numbers are in sequence. It's, you know, they all have like a two-two-three number or something, but that, that may be something to look at. They may give us a better deal if you buy a bulk.
We already do that.
We have state.
We already do that.
Got one in my pocket.
Me and my two foremen's both, it's invoiced every month.
That's what I'm saying, but it's, y'all are separate from anybody else.
But it's a county purchasing contract.
Constable purchasing department.
Yeah. And so, and you know, and if that's the case, then, then absolutely. You know, I know that I got hammered last year for just asking the question about the sheriff's office cellphones. You know, that was not a popular topic last year, when I just asked about it, twenty thousand dollars in one department, you know? And so. You know, that was not a popular topic last year, when I just asked about it, twenty thousand dollars in one department, you know, and so uh but, you know, no, nobody helped me debate that last year, I debated that on my own, and so, you know, the issue becomes, you know, where's the liability? I think Tac would have something to say about it, and I think Rebecca ought to weigh in on the ordeal, you know, because I don't think you can mix your personal business with government business, and with it being in the news, I'm surprised at the conversation today.
All right, y'all ready to move forward?
Yeah, did, did we take, agree that two thousand's what's coming off that one ninety-two nine eleven? Is that what it was reduced, two thousand?
Looks like that's about right.
Judge, I'm always the bad guy, but I'll bring it up again, what are we gonna do about the part-time clerk at JP five?
Can I make a statement?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. I'm not going to willingly do it up, but I will say, I am a team player, I know this position has caused a lot of hurt feelings. And I'm sorry, this makes me emotional. I wanna work with everybody, I don't want controversies between any offices, I don't want, when it comes to time, to talk about salaries, because I know supposedly we're not gonna talk about that until July the twenty-seventh, I don't want anybody else walking into the courtroom to watch the fireworks. With that being said, I feel that I need this position, being a team player, I will work through it, once again, I won't voluntarily give it up, but if you choose to take it from me, I understand that too.
Thank you.
It, it's not gonna be taken from you, because I'm, I'm gonna get voted down, so.
I just would like, and I'd just wanna say I appreciate those three votes, but.
And you and I have talked about this, you know where I stand, so, but.
And you and I, last conversation was that if this was an issue, and I took you at your word, that if this was gonna happen, I would receive a phone call and you would personally come to my office and say, um, have a conversation with me.
No, our conversation was that if I put it on the agenda. Because I do have that taped.
Okay.
Oh lord.
Okay, well, on the uh, on the part-time clerk position at JP five's office, let's go ahead and discuss it. How, how does everybody on the court feel about that? You're for it?
I'm for it.
I'm for it.
Okay, then.
And I'll tell you, I'll tell you why.
Okay.
In two precincts, commissioner precincts, we have several JP's. I think JP is in constable's one of the most important offices we have for keeping down problems with the public. I know I've been approached by people that said, you need to cut some of this out, but when you do, you'll add deputies on the constable position, because they hip out, they know the public, this is no historical office that comes from the European countries. The JP was close to the people, they keep a lot of problems down that otherwise we'd be handling with the sheriff's department, and with the county attorneys and the judges up here. They can keep a lot of things from ever happening that would be blown up bigger, and uh the county some years ago decided to go to six JP's, the Lumberton JP probably handles more business than any court in the county. I have, well, I actually have three JP's in my precinct, and uh Nubbin has, well, him and Chris together have two, I guess, in theirs, but uh, there may come a time when this county cannot afford the JP's it has, but uh, I think that ought to be something that we're approaching in the future, and I don't think that we ought to try to Lumberton has more business, brings in more income than any other JP, and I think that we shouldn't be, have this discussion every year, nothing against you, Nubbin, I just think that we ought to agree that this is not a proper discussion to get out in the public, that we're trying to uh you know, hold JP twenty-five feet to the fire.
Five? I don't think that we're, anybody's trying to do that, this is nothing in any way personal or anything like that, I think what we're trying to do is make sure that uh, if it's justified, it's there, and if it's not justified, we need to, I mean, we've got this six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar deficit that we're looking at, and we've got to figure out some way to cover that.
We're not gonna cover it out of JP five.
No, sir, I, I made that statement at the beginning, we weren't gonna cover it today. I got something I gotta ask. Yes, sir. Is it good business to be taping conversations, or are you aware of conversation was taped?
As long as one side, one party knows it's being taped, it's legal.
Right, I know, I just don't think it leads to good morale, especially in a budget hearing, whenever you're telling another elected official, you're taping their conversation with them.
That's your opinion.
So I just.
That's your opinion.
And let's move forward, are we through with JP five's budget?
I just need a recap.
Yes, ma'am.
On your travel expense, are we leaving at eleven hundred, or are we increasing it to twelve seventy-five?
Uh, what would the judge like?
Oh, I'll take twelve seventy-five.
We're gonna put twelve seventy-five? Well, if, if, if you wanna do it uh, uniformly, like Chris said earlier, with uh, Chris's and, and Charles's, if we keep y'all all uniform, that, that would be, and, and I agree, we, we need to, we need to try to get our offices uniformed as much as possible. And if that, like, you agree with that, Chris? Yeah, I, I mean.
Twelve seventy-five on what?
On travel expense?
On the line out in four twenty-six.
And if you don't, if you don't use it, it's gonna come back to the budget, but still, it's there to be made.
So we are increasing it to twelve seventy-five from eleven hundred?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so.
Judge Warner, good morning.
Good morning.
Judge Warner's budget stays the same, it was one forty-seven, nine thirty last year, and she's asking for the same this year, unless we make any changes with salaries? Judge Warner, do you have anything you'd like to address?
Uh, the only thing is, is uh, I don't know how much they allow for uh, someone to fill in for tonight. Um, I have not used anyone for over a year, uh, if she takes vacation or sick leave or something, I'm at the office, usually from eight to two. Uh, if there's something going on that maybe someone coming in later on, I'll stay late, but uh, I, you know, I just don't see the need in having someone up there if I can do that, so.
We appreciate that.
It's been, it's been about a year or so since I've used someone.
And in our budget, it's three thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars for a re- uh, clerk relief.
And that, the way I understand that's figured is if your clerk took every vacation day and, and uh, any sick time, that that's enough money to cover for her to take off, is that how that's figured?
That is correct, it's two hundred and eighty hours for Judge Warner's office, it's based on, in each individual office, because the person there has different vacation times, and so each office has um, it's based on their clerk and their vacation and sick time that they have accumulated.
If, I mean, if y'all wanna cut that, that part out of my budget, you know, the only thing is, like I said, I'm there if you have, if, as long as you don't have a problem with me filling in from you know, the office isn't gonna be open, but maybe from eight to two, unless I get a call, or um, I'm sick and she's on vacation or something, and the office will just be closed, but right now, you know, everything's just so slow that I just don't place that need in it.
I think it'd be wise to leave like a week, maybe, and just in case you have a worst case scenario, something happens, you're in the hospital, can't be there, or if you're out of town, she, she can't be there, and my thing is, is because we're, we're making it a practice to come back to court, right? I mean, I know we gave permissions the other day for up to ten thousand, but it's, it's a.
Not on salaries, huh?
Yeah, okay, it's, it's a lot bigger deal if you have to make a budget adjustment during the year, bringing it back to court, and so my thing is rather have it there, not need it, than something happening, you have to have a day where somebody has to fill in, you have to come to court to ask for a day.
Jackie, like in your office, is it possible, I don't know what the phone system y'all own, like if, if uh you're not gonna be able to be there or something, to roll it over to my secretary at uh, Saratoga?
I do think that we have that call, I think it's call waiting or call forwarding.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I believe we do have that, um.
Well, why, why don't you talk to Amanda, Amanda, if we could cut out, what, three thousand dollars?
Yeah.
If we could cut that out, because Amanda's there Monday through Thursday, she's not there on Friday.
Well, see, that's what we're doing, we're doing the Monday, Thursday, Thursday, ten o'clock.
Okay, then, if you're gonna, if you need to go out for a doctor's appointment, or you get a call and have to go out for, you know, a death or anything, be very simple, roll that phone over to Amanda. And uh, you know, she's perfectly capable of handling it, and that, we have the time. Okay, now how much can we cut?
Angela, what's the amount for a part-time clerk in her office?
Three thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars.
Three thousand?
Six forty-five.
Six forty-five, okay.
Judge, are you okay cutting that whole amount?
Well, I mean, if y'all wanna, like I said, you know, like, keep half of it, or keep a part of it, or a week of it, or, you know?
How much would it be for forty hours for a part-time clerk, can you, roughly?
It's thirteen oh two an hour, I don't have a calculator with me.
I don't either.
Why don't we just leave, say sixteen forty-five in it, and that'll more than, that'll cover nearly two weeks, and take two thousand out?
Yes, sir.
What happens if she gets hit by a truck in an ICU and the clerk wins the lottery and leaves?
Amanda's gonna catch it.
You know what I mean, so like in two weeks, it's all gone, the office is closed, I mean.
No, we'd make an adjustment.
You would make it, in, in a, in a, in a, if you like that, you would definitely make an adjustment, but you, you know, you're, you're, you're talking about the, the far extreme, you would, you would have to replace the JP, obviously, but in, in that case, uh, until that point came, uh, the other JP's, I'm sure would have to fill in just to get it.
And that could happen at any office.
Yeah, no, no, my, my point is that, is that that is the far end of that extreme act, but what we're talking about now is the other.
Well, what's it, thirteen one?
Your day's gonna be great right now, nothing's ever gonna change.
Right.
You know, in the circumstances, and in reality, it's twenty, twenty.
Well, the circumstances change when you change.
You're taking half the money.
Right, and, and that.
But what does a clerk, a clerk can't replace Jackie.
Right.
All they can do is answer the phone.
Right, but you're taking clerk's money, I mean, money that would be for a clerk there, right?
Right, well, well, that's, that's what Ken was saying.
Well, the assumption that she'll, that somebody always, that she'll always be there to take up the slack.
Right, but that's what Ken was saying, if there's nobody gonna be, that, the phone, you know, somebody needs to call, or they can have, they can even post Ken's phone number on, on, you know, his clerk's phone number on the door, yeah, no, the, the phone number for his office, they can contact his secretary, and she would, she could make those appointments or do whatever is necessary.
Say out for lunch or whatever.
Yeah.
And you have the money to cover it, I guess.
And cover the rollover to him, I'm sure, yeah.
So then what's the point in keeping any of it then?
Keeping what? Any, any of that money?
Yeah, if you're gonna roll it all over to, to, to uh, to his.
You're talking about the, the money that we're taking out?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, I mean, why is half, why would a hundred be great?
It's gonna roll over to the budget. It's gonna roll over to the budget.
No, no, you're talking about why keep any of the money if you can roll over the phone call.
Oh.
If you're cool with rolling, taking half, why not be keeping all of it?
I mean, if, if she has a planned vacation or something, say Jackie wants to take a week vacation, I get, do you take a vacation?
Uh, yes.
Okay, you hope to, okay, let's say that she plans to take her vacation, same week that Amanda takes her vacation, then we would need someone to.
That was the example that I was getting?
So that's, that's why we're leaving that amount in the budget.
So as long as everybody's saying a week.
So you, you wanna just, forty hours, um, or you wanna?
Yeah.
A week. Well, it's gonna be more, it's gonna be more than forty hours, it's gonna be nearly two weeks probably.
I don't know, we're on a new week.
Gives you some flexibility, but what I'm saying is, in tight times, I have a secretary that's there four days, four days a week. Some days we may not get ten calls, some days we may get a hundred, but we have plenty of time to answer if you need us. No problem. And if we take two thousand dollars, well, that's two thousand bucks.
All right, we're leaving sixteen hundred and what?
Forty-five.
Sixteen forty-five?
Well, that's what we took out, we're leaving two thousand.
Oh, I thought you said cut.
Okay, I heard, I heard leave sixteen.
The other way around.
Okay, other way around, that's fine.
Cut, cut two thousand.
Probably add more, but uh.
So we're gonna cut two thousand?
Yes, ma'am. And you're good with that?
Yeah, we're taking two thousand.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, that's what, that's what I.
Appreciate it, Jackie.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I'm back down to the, the same item on the others, the travel expense, do you need the fifteen thirty?
Well, I, I left that there because sometimes they have uh, workshops that I like, the school, the Texas Justice Court Training Center, and um, like last year, I was at Tyler, so that's why I just liked it like it was.
Judge, could we make that amount twelve seventy-five to match the others?
Look, I just cut two thousand.
I know.
Yes, sir, we can do it to eleven seventy-five.
It's be twelve, twelve seventy-five.
Uh, twelve seventy-five.
On what land, Judge?
Four twenty-six.
So that's cutting it to two hundred and fifty-five dollars, is that agreed?
Yes, sir. Does anyone on the court have anything further?
On JP three?
Anything else, Judge Warner? What did you say?
Anything else?
Angela has.
Angela?
JP three's travel is a thousand, are you gonna leave it at a thousand, I think that everybody else is twelve seventy-five.
What are we doing?
On JP three's budget, his uh, travel expense is one thousand, we're gonna bump it up to twelve seventy-five, so it's all uniform.
On three?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then um, JP four is eleven forty-eight.
We'll make that one twelve seventy-five as well. Does any of the JP's have anything else they'd like? Add, or subtract?
My part-time is still available, I don't know about the car, but available to travel, to help out when need be.
Okay.
Um Brainy will be going two weeks with Charles, to help out over there, but my girls are always available, if need be.
Well, I know he appreciates that, and I'm sure the others do as well. We appreciate it. Sir?
I said I wish if it was there yesterday, because yesterday I said it all.
How's it doing?
I stayed for blood pressure, too.
Take two today. All right, well, that finalizes the justice of the piece, we're gonna skip the constables for just a minute, I hope y'all don't mind, but I'd like to go ahead and address Judge Simpson. Uh, Judge Simpson asked to uh, address the court on behalf of retirees, and this has to do with the uh, employee healthcare for retirees.
I was just wondering if uh, maybe y'all could give us some kind of relief on our payments, if we're making every month, we pay for a hundred and twenty-three dollars a month. That's a big lick coming out of my little retirement check, so I thought maybe if we could get some kind of relief, the county does not have no incentive to work for our county. I've been here thirty-three years, and, I mean, looks like somebody could help us on something.
So right now, it looks like the county contributes four hundred dollars, four hundred dollars and eight cents, according to what I have, towards the healthcare.
I don't know, I just know I pay for twenty-three.
I think the way the uh, policy reads, Rose, Rose should have it, but I think the way the policy reads it, we provide half uh, of a retiree's uh, health insurance up until they are eligible for uh, or to the age of sixty-five, isn't that correct?
I believe so.
So it would vary, I guess, per employee?
No, it's the employee, well.
It's employee.
It shows, are you looking in the highlighted place, it shows the retiree's contribution?
Oh, okay.
There is one where it varies, apparently, uh, if you look at the second page, we have one retiree at the very bottom, whether it be the fourth up from the bottom, that we're paying more for, because she was under some grandfathered uh, policy, uh, and she has her employee spouse coverage, and we pay half. So we're paying half of an employee spouse coverage there, from, but from what I'm told, that policy changed, and anyone who retires after that, it would be half of the employee only coverage.
Correct.
So if insurance goes up to fifteen hundred dollars, the county's gonna pay seven fifty of that. Only employee only, not any uh, dependents. Right now, the uh insurance for employee only appears to be eight hundred dollars and sixteen cents per month, and the county pays four hundred dollars and eight cents, and the employee's responsible for four hundred dollars and eight cents. And Judge Simpson is asking for some help, you know, on the employee uh, cost.
My thoughts are, in better years, or wh- or whenever, if, you know, I would be open to considering, like if an employee retired at uh, I have a couple of different things, if, if an employee retired at twenty years, then you pay the fifty percent like we're doing, if they worked twenty-five years, then county pick up seventy-five percent, and if they worked thirty plus years, the county paid a hundred percent of that, that's one, that's one thought, another thought is, if you haven't, if, if you pick it up to where the county's gonna do something like that, then start it at age sixty-two, if they have worked for the county X number of years, and uh, they're at age sixty-two, because, and that would just leave paying those three years for everybody who retires, so. So, and I know it's hard when you have a big deficit like that, but, uh, again, morale, and, you know, what, what can we give to someone who gave their life to public service? You know, uh, I'm, I'm open, I don't know what I would do, but, I mean, if, if a person served thirty years, I mean, I'd be open to something. You know, the details, I guess, we have to be hammered out based on the budget.
My, my take on this is, we're, we're paying, uh, there's eight people on our retiree insurance, out of all the people who've worked in Hardin County. There's eight people. Generally, what I've seen is people work their way past, they work into their social security years anyway. Uh, they don't, they, they're not eligible under, under our own rules. We've got eight people we're taking care of, and, and I, and not, not knowing how old Kathy is. The, the years that we cover them are, are not gonna be that many to begin with.
Well, some might be ten years. I had, I had a guy retire at fifty-five.
Right.
So that'd be ten.
No, and I understand that, too.
Somebody could come to work at the county at age twenty and retire at forty or forty-five, and you'd have.
But I understand, I, I'm understanding all that, but the majority of the people, if you look, I, I said, we got eight people on retirement insurance. It, it, it doesn't, is, that's, that's, those, that's few and far between, apparently.
Well, you'd have more. If, if, if the policy was changed, then you would probably have more. Or you could. But, I mean, I, I would be open to it, you know.
Well, I, my personal feeling is, this year, when we're scraping for dollars.
Right.
And I always go back to the public. If we've got people out there that retire, they don't get a penny. Their employer does not pay one penny on there. Uh, we're paying half, which is a pretty significant contribution. Uh, seventy-two hundred dollars a year, I mean, that's, that's not chicken feed. And, uh, that's, uh, I, I'm willing to stay where it is, I'm not willing to go any higher, because we've got these taxpayers that are gonna be, uh, we're gonna probably be asking for a penny or so this year in order to try to put this budget together. And a lot of them that work out there, they don't have these conditions.
Well, Eric, there's five counties around us that pay twenty years a while where they pay full insurance on their.
Right, and the state used to pay a hundred percent, and they all, they're cutting it back this year. They're being full, they used to cover their retirees a hundred percent till they died, which was pretty good insurance, you know, better than, than, uh, Medicare or anything like that. But I listened to the debate up there in the legislature, they can no longer afford it. People haven't looked at the conditions. They're in state, got hit with this oil and gas, just like we did. And it's not always what you would like to do, it's what you're forced to do, because I'm telling you, the public's not in an appetite for a tax increase this year. I've talked a lot, Solomon, they got these appraisal jump-ups, and, uh, they're not gonna take this lightly, and then we're probably gonna be going to them in November for maybe two cents to do this annex. You're not gonna be looking at a happy people out there. And so I think we gotta be very careful what we do this year.
Looks like we're paying thirty-eight thousand four hundred a year right now for the eight retirees.
Didn't Rose give us a, uh, printout on, uh, their ages at one time, too?
I did at one time.
I think I've got it somewhere. Uh. Uh, if you're asking for each one of our opinions, I, I would say along the same lines as, uh, Chris. I could see that if, uh, an employee worked thirty years, paying seventy-five, uh, whereas, you know, if they worked twenty or more, anytime from retirement until eligible, keep it the same. And if you have, we don't have many that have thirty years, do we?
And that's what I was saying, the same thing, it, I mean, the longevity, you gotta take care of your longtime employees. And, and most of that longevity, the, and like you're saying, too, you gotta also consider if somebody comes in to work at twenty years of age. We just don't have a lot of people that come here at twenty and stay till they're sixty, uh, or, or even fifty. Uh, you've got, you've got to take care of those people that do give their whole life to our, to our county, and to our job. So, that's my opinion of it, and I agree with you on the longevity and breakdowns.
Is this something that the, uh, Personnel Policy Committee would like to take up and look at?
That'd be my recommendation. Yeah, we can look at.
We can look at, okay.
Anything else, Judge Simpson? Thank you very much. We'll go back to Adam B., Constable, precincts one through six. Start with, uh, precinct one. Uh, this is Constable Cooper, he's not here today, and I did not receive a proposed, uh, budget. So if the court would just review this, if you haven't already, and if there's any items we'd need to address, we'll do that at this time. Otherwise, I'd just say we leave it like it is.
I'd say we leave it the same if he didn't make any requests.
I think that was the intention. Precinct two, Constable Hawthorne.
My bottom dollar didn't change at all, I just moved where some things were located. Um, I've got a couple of questions. One, uh, Ms. Angela, do you know, what is the percentage, that six twenty-eight, four eleven loss? What percentage is that of our total budget? I'm just curious.
I don't have that calculated, I can get it, but I don't have it calculated.
Just, just whenever, we've, we've talked about that, I've just been curious what that, what that percentage of our total budget was.
Um, should be around six percent, is that about right, in that neighborhood? Close to six percent.
I think, I think you're right.
Okay, all right. Um, and if I'm, if I'm talking about something during the wrong meeting, tell me. 'Cause I, I didn't understand, there was another meeting coming up in, in July.
Well, what we talked about in July is that, right now, we're gonna leave the salaries where they are.
Okay.
Once we have our certified figures, if we're looking much better than we are right now, then we're gonna look at raises at that time. Or that's, that's my suggestion to the court, and so far, we've been following it, I think.
One thing, and I, I've talked to a few people about this, is that, like, like in the constable position, we are always paid elected official in the county. We're, we're paid less than, I, I think it's fair to say, if you, if you cut the salaries in half in the county, we're paid less than half of the people that work for this county, I think is a very fair statement. I think that's actually being liberal. Um, and to not come at you saying, I, I had a conversation with the county judge, and I said, I will not come in there and ask for money. We're not in a position for me to come in there and say, I will, if I want that, if I want that from a direct salary standpoint. But one curiosity, on car allowances, every, everybody that gets a car allowance, they all pay. You pay all your taxes out of it, you pay everything out of it. On the sheet you give me, it, it shows to be in salaries and wages. Okay? But I don't, retirement doesn't come out of it. That retirement benefit would be huge when you're looking at what my salary is versus what my car allowance is. You know, right, right now, my body can take working a lot of hours outside of being a constable to make ends meet for me and my family. But later in life, the fact that retirement was paid on that vehicle budget, when I can't take the amount of hours I work right now to be able to pay my bills, would mean that I'm still able to take care of my family.
I don't know if Constable Smith talked to you, but when we get to his budget here in a minute, I believe he cut his vehicle allowance, his travel allowance line item in half.
Okay.
And moved it to salary. A- and, and the reason for that was to, uh, collect more retirement on his, for his salary to increase, although his budget does not.
Okay.
Uh, although it will a little bit because of retirement, uh, part of it, but.
Right, and, and we, we, he and I had discussed that, but we were gonna discuss it this morning, but he was ill, so we weren't able to, to have that final conversation. Also, just because it's been a, a big deal this morning, where all of a sudden my jumps and says four sixty on telephone, that is not a telephone. That is a MiFi card for the data, a little data pack that I use when I'm in my truck, 'cause I was absolutely burning up mine and my family's data plan, trying to find addresses and houses and track people on Facebook and everything else to be able to locate where they truly are to give them their paper.
And Angela and I have talked, and I believe everybody that has, uh, these, uh, air cards, I think we're gonna make a line item on the budget that says wireless data. And that's probably where your, yours will end up going, if, if we, are we still considering that?
Yes, sir.
So that's probably where that will end up. We'll leave it here for now, but that's probably where that will end up, is in a different line item called wireless data or something like that.
Rose, isn't there something in the law that prevents your car allowance going on to retirement?
I'd have to research that.
I believe we discussed this, because, like Constable Hawthorne's saying, I think most everyone would prefer that they pay retirement on their. But I think there's something in the law, we've looked at this before. Because it'd certainly be preferable, you know? Or it'd be preferable to a lot of people.
When, when you look at that, if we're gonna look at it from that angle, let's also look if we, if it's simply the fact that we call it a vehicle allowance that is the problem, and don't call it salary, that's easy enough. You can take everything I give for vehicle allowance and put it over on the line that says salary. If that's the only issue we're dealing with?
I'd like to do that, too.
We've done it for one, we'd do it for all.
We're already finished with the JP.
Is that when it, when it comes time for, I'm getting a raise on my car allowance.
Yeah, and when it comes time for us paying retirement, it's gonna increase too.
Right, exactly, yeah, it didn't work out.
As far as the county.
Yeah, yeah, see, this, this is what you have to, you have to.
I, I'm all for that.
Right.
That would be great, if we can look into it and do it, but I wouldn't just wanna do it for the constables, I'd wanna do it for everybody that gets car allowance.
It'd have to be across the board.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd have to be, and you have to look and see what the effect is on the county, 'cause we're matching two hundred percent.
Two to one, yeah.
Two to one.
But if it's being, if, if it's being called part of your salary, though, and I understand what it's being saying, you're paying your ta- you're paying taxes out of it, you're having, it's part of your income tax. If it's being part of your salary, it's part of your salary.
That, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Well, you don't pay income tax on it unless you cannot.
No, they take it out every, every.
Well, they, they, they take it out, but you, if you can show by your mileage that you're using that car allowance up, then you don't pay any tax on it.
You get it back.
You get that back.
Have to keep a log.
If.
I like it physical.
If everyone was turning in mileage every month and getting a reimbursement, you wouldn't be taxed on it. But if you're ta- if, if you're given just a flat rate every month for vehicle allowance, then you're taxed on it. I know, because when I came into office as constable in two thousand one, I thought it was crazy they were taxing my vehicle allowance, but, uh, the auditor at that time explained it to me, and then I went to my CPA, and he explained to me that it was being done correctly and why.
Yeah, we, we would do that.
But you get it back at the end of the year when you turn in your mileage to this, to the.
We went through that years ago when we, uh, set up the system we've got now, that rather than employee having to keep a log, and file a mileage report each month with an elected officials, got a blanket car allowance. And there was, you know, different gymnastics went through to, uh, uh, and that's the reason that Chris and I get more than Nubbin and Allen, is because we have a bigger territory. You know, we didn't do it a hundred percent fair, because I've got fifty-two percent of the county. But we worked some things out to make it sort of fair, so that we didn't have to keep mileage and stuff like that. And also, it encouraged people to keep, buy their own vehicles, where a lot of counties, Chris knows, Nubbin knows, we go to these deals. They're driving county vehicles.
Lot more expensive than mine.
Far more expensive.
Yeah.
And, but, with a commissioner or any elected official, it gives you the option to use your vehicle for county business, or use your vehicle for personal business. Otherwise, you would have to prove to the government that you've got a second vehicle, and you'd have to keep mileage on these things. So we went to what was a, basically, the simplest system and a sort of fair system. And I think if you start swapping it over to salary, which would certainly be desirable in your retirement, I think you're gonna run into some problems.
And we have a pretty large unfunded liability on retirement.
Yeah.
So we gotta consider that.
But I, I, you know, then you're gonna have to keep mile, gas mileage and all this stuff here to go to IRS to, uh, you know, and if you don't file a long form, well, you know, you're gonna be trapped there. But a, a lot of this has been looked at, it's, it's not to say we're fixing to look at travel policy again. It's not to say it can't be looked at, it's just that you gotta be careful, because it was well researched.
You gotta have a lot of write-offs like this, like that, and, or different senior income tax retire, to get it back, just the mileage, that's like that, and it just, it just didn't work.
But does it work better like it is now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
CPA said, said, you just don't have enough write-offs. And, uh, he says, you know, you, you know, you should keep this law, so we're gonna pay by the mileage anyhow, so.
Yeah, a- and, and that's what we determined.
A start and an end, but.
Many years ago, that was easier just to go by mileage. And you get fifty-six cents or whatever it is back, simpler on your taxes, than to try to keep up all these expenses, car repairs, car depreciation, and all this stuff.
Yeah, they just, like, time, you cut out the law, but it didn't, didn't mean anything.
And if you go the other way, you've gotta keep these laws. But we're gonna be looking at personnel policies and travel expenses. The judge has set up a committee to look at it. Uh, all elected officials and all department heads will be receiving a memo, asking them to give their thoughts on the personnel policies and the travel expenses. Send back whatever thoughts that you wanna send back, and, uh, we're gonna try to put it all together and make a report to the court. And when we have those meetings, you're welcome to come and, you know, say whatever you want.
Bill, it's hard to eat anything for ten, fifteen dollars for dinner.
You fix to get a form, I mean, you fix to get a letter. But whatever Bill's suggestions are on there, we're gonna look at them.
I feel a little, uh, at line.
You won't eat very high on hog, I'm Bill.
Well, I don't eat like eating at the house.
No.
I don't eat McDonald's that day.
McDonald's getting pretty expensive.
Being on your, uh, travel allowance line item, that, it's, which is two two five, that's where your vehicle allowance is, and you've got two hundred dollars there.
Well, I let, I put that out there, um, we don't, I couldn't find a line for, for school, or travel, or things of that nature. And for the constables, for any training we get, we pull every single dollar out of Leo's money.
Mm-hmm.
When you go to school, they tell you, if you pull every single dollar, Leo's is supposed to be a supplement to your training budget, not your entire training budget. And they can come in and say, we're not gonna give that to you anymore, because your, your county is responsible for some of that. So I thought, well, I'll, I'll move two hundred dollars of, I didn't add any, so where, wherever that two hundred dollars needs to be, to be considered part of training and travel and, I, I don't know where it needs to be, I guess, is my.
When you say Leo's money, what are you talking about?
The state sends us money for training, um, like my office, what, what did we get this year, ten, six hundred and twenty dollars? I, I, I think six hundred and twenty dollars. Okay? And so we use that money for training that we go to, or we find a free school to go to, or we, we, we do whatever we have to do, we pay out of pocket, whatever we do. And so anything, I, I was fortunate, I came into office behind someone who had spent Leo's money in, I don't know, ten years or whatever, so I had a pretty large account. So, so my things have been covered that I needed to go to, but I felt like I needed to put some money out of my budget in there, so the state doesn't come in and say, well, your county's not, this isn't, you're not using this the way it's designed. You're using it a hundred percent, and your county's not supplying any of this need for you, and I don't wanna come in and take what I have.
And for two years, we didn't get Leo's money.
Correct.
Yeah, we just got it back last year, I believe, is that right?
Correct, and you, and you start talking about having to do an adjustment to the budget in the middle of the year, so I can get my mandatory classes, and that's gonna be a, a big deal. So I felt like I needed to at least put something in there.
So that line item is actually, should be travel and training. Can we add that line item to each constable's budget?
Yeah.
And, you know, I would be willing.
Training and travel?
You know, to consider, what, what, what would it cost for one conference if you didn't have your Leo's money?
To go to Sam Houston up there, you get everything, two-year cycle, or is it about five or five, five, or?
No, yeah, it's gonna be between seven and eight, 'cause you're looking at a hundred, hundred, a hundred twenty-nine dollars a night for a hotel, somewhere in there. And then, then meals.
Yeah, like, last time I went was to the Purdue, it was seven hundred something dollars, and I got to, gotta go in the door somewhere.
Well, now, right now, I think each of the constables have a, a pretty good balance in their Leo's, is that correct?
Yeah, if you just wait every two years, I mean.
Yeah, we can.
You, it, you know, we, by the time that Leo money comes, it builds up enough to, to take everything at one time.
Yeah.
Travel, the hotel, and everything.
And that's a continuing education requirement by law, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
We just, well, we need forty hours for the entire. We just spend only eight forty hours for the entire session of four years, so, that, that could more than cover what we gotta have, just what we get every year.
I don't, I don't think you need to add that, I think the Leo's covered, that's my thing, that's if you don't get expelled, huh?
Let's go back to your travel allowance line item, Ben.
Okay.
Uh, which is two twenty-five. Um, fourteen-four is what you get now annually.
Okay.
You brought up earlier about maybe moving some of that to salary. Um, I know that the court just said, and I agree with, uh, what everybody said, I wouldn't wanna see a hundred percent of that moved into your salary, but, um, I just don't think that would be good for the constables, and I don't think it'd be feasible for the county, that's gonna be a big bump in, 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 uh, retirement, but, uh, if there's a certain amount you wanted to move, I think.
What did, what did Constable Smith move?
Half.
Half.
I believe.
I'm more than agreeable to that, if that's something that.
Well, I, I, I would suggest that.
No, he moved more than half.
I, I, I don't understand how he moved any.
Well, it's all under salaries and wages, right?
It is, but it, when you do your salary increases, that, that part's not calculated under the three percent, like we gave last year.
I don't see how anyone moves anything out of a travel into salary.
Yeah, we have now, Net Data, that's how it was in the past, Net Data's new count codes, it's all under travel allowance.
What about this, is, is the thirty-six hundred that we're talking about for Ben's, is that, is that his auto allowance?
No.
At the beginning of this year, that was his, this is his salary and his travel allowance, but in January, it got split out. And this is how much he's been paid for his vehicle allowance since January, from January to March.
Okay.
If you look, I think if you look at the next one.
Who is that on?
It actually has the salary and the travel allowance broken out. That's cool.
I, I, I just don't see how we give an option to do that. Unless we, unless the county establishes a policy on.
About four or five years ago, when we bumped up the vehicle allowance for constables, gas was a little over four dollars a gallon, and now it's about two something, two seventy or something like that. So if he wanted to reduce his vehicle allowance, but ask for it to be moved into salary to bump that up, uh.
So if fuel goes back up, we're gonna take it out of salary, move it back down?
Fuel goes back up, we just gotta address it then.
Well, I, I'm missing something here. I do not see how we're allowing an elected official, or we've got some department heads that have allowances, how we're allowing them the flexibility, or the option to say, I won't take part of my car allowance and put it into salary.
Well, if they ask for a reduction in car allowance, but an increase in salary.
I, I don't think we can do that.
Okay.
I, I mean, uh, unless we establish a, a policy on that.
My, my question being, why? You say we have to pop, to establish a policy to be able to, why?
I don't think the government.
I, I, I just don't, I just don't think the, I just don't, unless we establish a policy. Okay, what if I come in here and say, I wanna take my car allowance and I wanna put half out in my salary?
Okay.
I have never understood that, that anyone had that flexibility.
Well, and, and that's, that's why there's gonna be a vote on it.
Yeah, the county's gonna establish a policy on it. Because we've got this county match that comes into play, which affects the bottom line, and then you could have some government regulations that come in here.
And, and I, by all means, I wanna, I don't wanna do anything below board, that's why we're obviously.
Well, I, I, I wouldn't call it, I wouldn't call it below board, I'm just saying, until the commissioner's court establishes a policy, I don't think we, individual employees have the flexibility to say, this is my option, I've never heard of that at all.
It has to be uniform across the board, is what Ken, and I understand what he's saying.
Sure enough, I don't have an issue with that, cuz I don't think anyone would be against that from a personal standpoint. I understand we have a county liability that we have to look at, I get that, but I'm just, I'm trying to.
I'm just thinking in a budget workshop, that, and I'm brand new to all this, but I'm just thinking if, if a constable comes in and says, I don't need fourteen-four anymore, but I need ten for my vehicle allowance, can I have a bump in my salary to get me up closer to the JP's or anybody, anyone else? That's where I'm, that's where I'm coming from with this, I'm not talking about just any of the time.
I understand the thinking behind it, but I also understand the thinking behind, from the public standpoint, why were we given this much travel allowance? If it, if that much travel allowance is not needed. And this is a situation we had, these constables weren't all equal for many, many years. And we addressed salary through the travel allowance. Remember, Bill?
Hold on. We, we had a ten-minute conversation about how we can't do that.
Well, you can only do what the law allows and what the commissioner court sets a policy. And I'm saying there's no policy on it, it may be a good policy. But there is no policy that allows an employee to take part of their travel allowance and put it in a salary.
In other words, if, if you're, if, let, let's say that Ben keeps his log and justifies a five hundred a month increase. It would go to your car allowance, not your salary.
Okay.
And it's because of the territory, the amount, the amount of territory you're covering, the amount of calls, because the argument's gonna come back in a year or two. Well, I'm out in my precinct all the time, but so-and-so's not out in their precinct all the time, so I deserve two thousand a month, and I don't, you know, I don't care what y'all do with, with theirs and what have you, because that's another morale issue in the county, and so, uh, I think what Ken's trying to say is, when they addressed the, the salaries, they did it through the car allowances, because obviously, you have, you have a different workload, and, and everybody's, you know, to be in that position, have to be self-motivated. Like where Tim says, you know, everybody in West Harden's got his cell phone number, well, obviously, he's out and about, so.
Right.
Versus someone who may not get out and about.
Right, and, and this, if this is something we can't do, I, I understand that, but from the, from the title of the meeting, it's a workshop.
Opens up a whole different can of worms. And we addressed this year a number of years ago, and the constables were, and, and they're not overpaid now, no one in Harden County's overpaid, in my opinion. But in order to give a salary increase, we went back and we said, okay, let's take Tim. Tim has got a vast area to cover in his constable precinct. Okay, Lumberton, very close, very close. So, we had different amounts for different constables. We gave every constable the same amount, which in effect raised most constable salaries. I really doubt that probably in Lumberton, you use that much auto allowance. But part of it is already in your salary. It, it is in your total package. Because fifteen years ago, you were not getting twelve hundred dollars a month in Lumberton, or however the figure was, and the one in, Tim's precinct, y'all were not equal, everyone's equal now.
It was about four hundred dollars, I think, far around that.
It was very, very low, but the constable's salary is very, very low, and the court tried to make an adjustment to bring the constables up. Do they deserve more? I, I think they probably do. You can look at any of this stuff, you can look at my precinct with fifty-two percent of the county. And you could say, my salary ought to be more than Alvin's with only thirty miles of road and a little area that you can cover in five minutes. But that's not the way the system works. That's not the way it works, we're based on population, and that's the justification that precinct two and precinct, whatever, get the same salary. But when you get into car allowances, it was a very tough deal, I mean, we debated this stuff and looked at figures and everything else, and finally tried to write. Now, that's not to say that system has to stay the same always, but I do think that when you start jockeying this money between what the court justified to furnish you an automobile. And some of the thinking going into it was, okay, Tim's got a bigger area, but automobiles cost the same, you gotta have, you gotta have your base price of your automobile in there. And all of this travel allowance was to cover your capital investment in automobile, your maintenance in the automobile, your gas and oil in the automobile, there was lots of things that went into the discussion. Will you just pick a, figure out the area? And so sure, Tim maybe drives more miles than you do, but you can't make the system a hundred percent fair. And at that time, the constables, they all agreed this was a fair system. Now, we're fixing to look at travel policies again, and maybe there's different thoughts on it. But, I think we've got a real problem when we start letting, jumping between salaries. Because if that'd be okay, I'd take my whole s- travel allowance and put it in my salary.
I propose that just to me.
You know, because here in a few years, the county's gonna be matching it two to one. And I'd much rather, you know, it on my salary. But I also realize that when, when they do that, that the county's fixing to start, if this becomes a mess thing, the county's fixing to be, picking up some big bucks, like Chris said, we already have a.
Eight million?
Eight million dollar unfunded liability on, on retirement.
We're paying about fifty, fifty-five thousand every two weeks on retirement right now.
And, and the only thing I'm trying to point out, I'm not trying to be against anything that's, that's being said. I'm just trying to point out that a lot of these things had a lot of thought that went into them, and we just start kinda off the cuff changing them. We're fixing to upset a whole system here.
Don't run out of money in the next five or six years. I said, don't, I, don't run out of money in the next five or six years.
Can I, can I say something about this, and, and it's only because, I, I, I'm not sure where I saw it or I read it, I think I, me and Nubbin kinda looked at, at it one time, uh, Attorney General's ruling, and I, and I, I've gotta find it, uh, I'm pretty sure it was an Attorney General's ruling, over the same situation, that basically stated that the counties would apply, like, constables, all the same pay, pay the commissioners all the same pay, it's, it's fair and equitable. That's, that's through the Attorney General's side, Texas, well, if you raise your salary, then, uh, all the constables have to have the same. You can't, and, and what he's saying is, you can't, you can't do that, you have to, everybody has to do the same.
That's incorrect information, in Travis County, your constables make different amounts of money, and I can tell you a couple of other counties.
Different amounts of money?
Harris County does as well, several other counties do. But see, that's, that's what I'm saying. You're paid by the, the workload, not by the. But, yeah, and, and, but that's, that's what I'm saying, I, I read an Attorney General's ruling, ha- and, and it might, it's an old one, but, and they may have changed it. I'm, I'm not aware of it, and I keep reading, and I, I've been steadily reading since I took this job, but at one point, and, and, and I wanna say it was, uh, it's been in the last ten years, that the, the Attorney General's ruling on was that, that ev- every office is paid equitably through the county. Like, just because you're a constable over one certain part, doesn't mean you're gonna make any more than the constable over another part, and that's why, in our, our situation, uh, you know, it, it's, it goes by population. That's why Nubbin has a large share of Lumberton, and Ken has a large share of Lumberton, it, it goes by population, it's to make everybody have the same. It's, it, it has nothing to do with anything but population, um. I think that if we're gonna, you know, it, it, it has to be equitable across the board. If it's done for you, it's done for Tim, it's done for Bill, everybody does same, done for Greg, uh, no difference than JP's. Uh, JP's all make the same salary, do the JP's all have the same load? None of us do, we all have it different because of our, our, where we are, where we're located. But you should, everybody should be fair and equitable across the board, in my opinion, and that's, that's my opinion. Uh, like I said, it seems like I read somewhere that it was actually an Attorney General's ruling, so.
And, and it makes it in Harris County or these large counties, they're in a different population bracket. A lot, so the government code follows population brackets, hundred thousand, down to fifty, and, you know, depending on what population you're in, it's what government code that you're under. But I think for what we're under, keeping them level made sense when we did it with JP's and constables, because they were not, on travel allowance, their salaries had to be equal, as I understand by law. But on travel allowance, they were not equal, we made them all equal, they all seemed to agree to it. You know, you can make an argument that it's not fair, but the ones that maybe get a little bit more than what would be fair, I've never heard them complain, and so. I, I think we need to be very careful about how we.
Sure enough, I appreciate y'all's opinion and the time, when everybody bring it up, I wouldn't go have an answer.
I would re- I don't think any employee in Harden County makes the amount of money that they should make. As compared to Jefferson County or Orange County, we live in the same area, we buy homes, we buy cars and everything, same deal. But it's what can we put together and fund?
Right, and, and, and my own personal opinion, I think JP's ought to be up toward department heads, and I think constables ought to be where JP's are. And then, for me, it'd be, how do you get the money to do it, but that, that's what I feel like.
So in your travel allowance line item, what number should I put there?
I was just gonna leave it at the two hundred, but put it in the, well, the travel allowance should be zero, I guess, in that line that we're gonna create, the travel and training. Or would, would be where that two hundred would go.
Yes, sir, I made the line item and put two hundred there, but the, uh, line item two twenty-five is your actual vehicle allowance. Which should be fourteen-four, but I'm making sure that that's what we wanted for. And then the salary line item will change to thirty-two, seven ninety-four. I believe, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so the two hundred's gonna go under a different line item. Travel and training.
And travel.
Yes, sir.
To match the other budgets that have the same. On office supplies, you reduced it from three hundred to zero, uh, are you sure on that?
Yes, I did that, just moved, well, basically moved what was left into miscellaneous. My, my budget is extremely small, don't have an issue with that, but to try to break out what I'm gonna need per thing on that small amount of money is just almost impossible.
Then on printing, you reduced it from one hundred to zero.
Correct.
And equipment expense, you reduced it from four fifty to zero. And that's where you've moved, uh, that amount plus ten dollars to the wireless data line item that we talked about earlier?
Correct.
All right, I, I got a question, if you have something break on your truck, your lights, your, if you have something with a gun, something you need fixed, would that come out of equipment expense?
No, that comes out and be in the pocket.
All right, so, and, and where I'm at is, you know, the way forward is forward, and so, you know, do, do we, is that something that we would take care of for the elected official? Say he, his, his running lights, his red and blues go out. And he has to get them fixed or replace them, I know they're not cheap.
Equipment, red and blues are, that's not.
Well, they're supposed to be, but he, now he.
Is it true? Well, we give, we give constables red and blues.
I miss mine.
We didn't, we don't have. What about radio?
Yes, the county.
You do, county does provide the radio.
But not red and blue.
No, and that's why the radio budget shows four fifty, because if we have to have one repaired, whether they have to send us a whole new radio or wipe the front of it off, it's four fifty.
Or, not as four ninety-five, eh?
Oh, that, hell, if it went up, then I was unaware of that.
Just to, just for them to take it out, it's four ninety-five, and look at it, before they fix it.
And so, so what my suggestion would be, is that, you know, I'd rather give you something in there and you not have to use it. Than to not give you anything and it'd be frustrating for you to get something, just like the, the wireless data, I'm all for that, I think the county ought to provide that. I have the, the, the pleasure of being the commissioner in your precinct, and I know you work, and I know you use it, and so, I think that's, that's an issue where, if that's something, we gotta come up with additional four fifty, then I would be for that to take care of the constable, cuz on a, on a bad weather day, I'm getting texts from Ben, before I can get out of driveway, I've been down door store, it's clear, I've, I've been here, and when we have that, he communicates very well with me, and, and he, he doesn't have to, but fostering that teamwork deal, and so I'd be a hundred percent behind that.
Only thing I get from my constable is supper ready.
That ain't a bad deal either.
But I, I just have a question here, you said on office supplies and printing, you, you're going to zero there, is this because that you're officing in with a JP and you're using their supplies?
I use some of the, uh, I don't have very much printed, uh, the little that I do, yes, I use, uh, JP's.
Yeah, okay, so, so you, you have access to it, you don't need it in your budget?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
You got enough in yours to cover him?
And, and my, my recommendation for the constables would be to take a minimum amount, whether it be four fifty or five hundred. And just make it uniform across the board for all the constables to have that equipment expense.
I, I moved all that stuff out because I, I kept looking at that six twenty-eight four eleven.
And, and, and you know what? I commend that. I really do commend it, but. My way of thinking, population's not shrinking, it's getting bigger. I promise you, the majority of constituents do not know you make that sacrifice. So, what burden are we gonna put ten years down the road? Let's say we're at seventy-two thousand population, and for ten years, Ben's been paying for everything out of pocket. Is it reasonable? At that rate? And then let's say this whole court changes in ten years. Would, would the new court have that general expectation that the constables gonna come out of pocket?
Is this court still alive ten years?
Right. But that's my thing, and, and I'm just thinking the way forward's forward, not backwards. And, you know, I commend every elected official who pays out of pocket, but I do not agree with it. I agree, I think if you're on county dime, county ought to pay the bill.
I agree with Chris. I think I'd be careful, you know. That what you, I remember when I came on this court, there was a, and these were election flaws. There was officials saying, oh, well, I'm gonna give up my salary increase this year. Well, don't think about this, what about people who follow you? You know? It's hard to get things back in once you, once you give them up.
On the equipment expense line item four fifty-two, we're gonna put four hundred and fifty dollars in there?
But my recommendation would be that we make it uniform for, I don't know what the other constables have, but.
We'll go back to precinct one and make sure it's the same. I'll, I'll take care of that later. And on the, uh, line item four twenty-two, radio repair and purchase, I think we need to bump that up to five hundred.
Tim's correct, it is four ninety-five for a radio repair. Okay.
Do you have all that answer?
So you're gonna make it across the board on the others?
I agree with Chris.
Anything else, Constable Hawthorne? Anything else from the court on his budget? And move on to precinct three. Constable Overstreet. Morning, Constable. His, uh, his stayed the same as well, but let's do, look at the, uh, radio repair line item is correct.
He's got it.
Uh, he does not have a wireless data card. Do you need one? Okay. And he has two hundred dollars in his equipment expense budget. Do we wanna bump it up to four fifty so it matches the other?
I would.
I agree, yes.
And then the, uh, two hundred dollar printing item. Do you use Judge Hall's? Office supplies and printing?
And take that out.
Do we wanna match, if we match Ben's, we would knock, we'd knock it down to zero, is that? And Judge Hall, you have enough in your budget to cover what Bill does?
Now. Okay, it won't be on this budget, the bond?
It'll be the next year budget.
What about travel expense for him? He doesn't have a line item.
Training and travel? We need to add that.
We're, we're gonna add that to each constable.
How much did we put that?
Two hundred. And I'm working backwards, I'm up to office supplies now, so are we gonna make that zero? And that's okay with you, Constable? Other than the miscellaneous line item, his matches precinct two's budget. Everybody okay with that? And that yours is a little more than his, about sixty dollars. Ben's probably gonna be mad at you, but. Any questions about precinct threes? Anything else, Constable Overstreet? Thank you, sir. We'll move on to precinct fours. I did not receive a proposed budget from precinct fours, so we'll just, uh, we'll match his budget with precinct threes. Or precinct twos. Precinct five's request from Constable Smith. And, uh, he is sick today and couldn't be here. Uh, my recommendation to the court would be that we match his budget with precinct twos. Yes, ma'am. Well, he, he changed his office supply line item from one hundred to zero. But we could leave a hundred in there to make sure he's covered for that. Knowing Greg, he uses his at his office, most likely. Cause this is in color, is it? What it was, the original was.
So you want the office supply to be a one hundred?
Yes, ma'am. And he does have a MiFi card, so we will, we'll do the same with his that we did with Constable Hawthorne.
And Judge, would it be acceptable to, uh. Hold off on his salary request till we establish a county policy on this?
As far as his request on the, uh, vehicle allowance to move it to salary? I think the way we addressed it with Constable Precinct two was we, we, uh, did not allow that.
Yeah, I, I think we ought to, you know.
That was the consensus of the court.
Okay, okay.
So that's why I recommended that we just go ahead and.
Okay, so this.
Other than the one hundred dollars for office supplies, I think.
They're all gonna be the same.
Yes, sir. Is that okay with everyone? And Constable, uh, Smith has any questions, or we need to talk to him at a later budget workshop, we'll, we'll reschedule him. And we have, uh, Constable Precinct six, Constable Moody. He's been sitting there just waiting.
Just wait.
Yes, sir.
Okay, can I ask something about precinct four before we start?
Yes, ma'am.
What about a Wi-Fi, a MiFi for him?
He doesn't have one, so we will, we will actually match his to Bill's.
So you're not gonna get him a MiFi?
I will, uh, we'll do office, I mean, uh, training and travel line item, and, uh, and I'll put that together and I'll send it out to everybody.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll go back and do the same on precinct one. How are you, sir? Looks like the only increase that Constable Moody has requested is a increase of a hundred dollars a month in his travel allowance for his vehicle allowance. Is that correct?
Two fifty in radio repair.
Yes.
And miscellaneous and equipment expense.
Yes, so he did ask for some other increases as well. Let's go back to the travel allowance and we'll work down from there.
Are you on two twenty-five?
Yes, sir. Would you like to address the, uh?
Yeah, I'm coming here and asking for an extra hundred a month, uh, for that car. Because, you know, I travel, and I take calls and receive calls from the sheriff's office and answer them at night. Now, we have two active fire departments, and anytime they, uh, my phone goes off, you know, I respond. If we have a unintended hit, we, we respond to that, we work the schools on, we solve, work cases, solve cases. You know, we don't get the papers that Ben and Bill and him get and stuff, but you know, we're out there working, and I think, you know, uh. You know, uh, like, uh, Mr. Pelt said, you know. Especially on our side of the community, most knows us more than they know most everybody else. I probably, I ever's probably, I think, I don't know, answering six or seven calls a day. A minimum that doesn't come into the sheriff's office. Or if it's where it needs to, then we, uh, you know, roll it over the sheriff's office at Sis William. I mean, should be making arrests tonight on, uh, County Barn that, uh, that got broke into in Saratoga on Saturday night. You know, uh, and I think, uh, that you, uh, you know, will give that car allowance on the merit of working. You know, cause not sticking it in our pocket or nothing like that. It takes a lot of money. I mean, you got a car that's two thou- uh, two years old, and it's got right at eighty thousand miles, and it don't get there, just sitting there. Running back and forth to Coontz every day. You know, uh, we work all the high school stuff, we don't charge a school for security or nothing. We, you know, you know, Donnie Harrison, when he started over, he, he made that position like a resident deputy, and it works like that. And it works different than Ben and Bill and him's, uh, you know, uh, office. And that's not knocking them or nothing, it's just the way it is over there. People look to you to respond, and we respond.
And when you say we, you mean you?
Yeah, you know.
Just wanna make sure everybody realizes.
Sheriff's office or responding with a fire department or. I think last year, I thought I had, um, just one fire department, sixty-eight, uh. Sixty-eight responses were there, and I think, uh, I went back and looked, I think, um. Think I had like, uh, seventy-two arrests last year, thirty-nine were felony arrests and stuff. You know, I mean, it's productive. You know, and then take, you know, and you can't be, can't be productive unless you, you know, it takes a lot of fuel to be that productive out there. I mean, Nubbin, you know, run all the town over there. It's just different. You know that too, Al.
Well, I say this, it's a difficult area to cover, cause you're covering Big Ticket Retreat and Outlaw Ben.
You know, we was up there last week checking all those just for the school buses to get in and out.
Well, my question would be for the court, what matrix are we gonna use to determine an increase? Cause whatever the matrix is, it should be uniform.
And I, that's where I am too.
You know, if, if, to, if we increase Tim's, you know, I know, I don't work with Tim, but I do work with Ben. I know Ben's always out. I've called Ben personally on the weekend, talked to the judge before he moved over, and they. Deputies were tied up, Ben took care of an issue, you know, and so, uh, so if we, if we create a matrix and say, okay. We're gonna pay this car allowance but for this amount of miles per year or whatever, and they document it. And they're going over, say by twenty-five percent. Then we look at it, I mean, I don't know, but I wanna do what's fair. And obviously with the workload you got, I understand that, but what's, what's it do? If, if I, if I put it on you just saying it, and then I don't give Ben one, cause he just said it. Now I'm, now I'm contributing to the poor morale.
Well, this is the way I look at it, and I'm not being a negative to any other, other constable's office. I think if they, they want something extra, they oughta come in here and they oughta earn it.
Right.
When you know, and we got a few guys out there and ain't doing nothing.
Can I say something? I know this is Tim's, but, um, on the west side, we don't have the patrol. And I'm not taking anything away from the sheriff's department. But the sheriff's department mostly stays on the east side because most of the calls are over on the east side. Tim, he responds when we have something that the sheriff's department's tied up on. So he's right there, and, um. I just, you know, I mean, I know this is his block game right now, but, um. He answers calls quite a bit, and the sheriff's department can't, can't get up in there.
Well, and again, my thing is the matrix. What, what, what are we gonna do to spare, especially if you're six hundred thousand short already? And you're looking at adding, just like what we did, like we can justify the equipment expense with the MiFi cards and all that. What matrix are we gonna use to increase the auto allowance? Cause I mean, I agree. I mean, I, I, I agree, if you need it, you need it. But we've gotta have something to submit to, I mean, not only to the, to the court, but to our constituents. That's gonna hold us responsible for voting on the budget. And if we can justify it and say, well, uh, Constable Moody is, uh, responding to, just say fifteen calls a month. That should be going to sheriff's office. Well, obviously a hundred bucks is cheap. I mean, that's, you know, it's less than ten dollars a call that we're paying a peace officer to go respond to. And then that way, we, we've got an answer when people ask us, instead of saying, well, you know, he's, he's out in the schools and blah, 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 because. What your, what your constituents are gonna say, and, and we're, we're very, uh, very far right conservative in this county. And, and a lot of times the constituents demand to have documentation versus just your work. And so, we've gotta be able to produce that, and so the, my question, all of this is to say, what are the matrix we're gonna use? Cause I agree, if it's needed, we should give it. The way forward is forward. But we need, we're gonna have to establish a matrix. And I don't know, Judge, if that's something you wanna. The personnel policy, folks to look at?
Yeah, it might be something we can look at, but. And I have no idea what the judge's thoughts on it are, but. The constable precinct that Tim covers. Is probably one of the most difficult for several reasons. Jackie brought up one of them. You don't have the sheriff's deputies' presence on the west side of the county that you do on the east side of the county. And over in Min Sour Lake area where, uh, they have a greater presence. You also don't have any incorporated cities over there like Lumberton or Silsby or Sour Lake or Coontz. Who has a police department to help out. You're in strictly a rural area. And Big Ticket Retreat alone, and I made sure Nubbin's at some time in his career, Wayne had a little dealings with, uh, Big Ticket Retreat. Uh, some of those are some pretty difficult areas to cover. There are long ways. Tim has to cover those. Has to cover them a lot of times when there's not a deputy available. I don't know how you, you know, how you figure and compensate, you know, and form the matrix that Chris is talking about, but I do think there has to be some. It don't has to be, but there, it would be fair to have some realization that that is a tough precinct. And there's no doubt that, and I think, uh. Constable Hawthorne probably agree that he does not make the mileage in his precinct.
Ben gets out, he's out working, he's, uh, he's answering calls too.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm not talking about, I'm, we're, we're talking, we're not talking about duties, we're talking about travel allowance. And I would sincerely doubt that just in the Lumberton area. That is your area, isn't it? Oh, you're North Silsby, okay. But let's say the Lumberton area. There's probably no way that that constable can answer enough calls to put the, even a fraction of the miles on that Tim does. And, uh, you know, we're talking about a travel allowance here. And, uh, we put them across the board, trying to compensate for a salary. But when you get strictly down to travel allowance, as which it is supposed to be, well, it's probably not that equitable. What, what's he asking for? A hundred dollars a month?
Yes, sir.
I'd go for it.
Well, and then I would make the recommendation to move Ben's up a hundred.
I can understand if he's got North Silsby and all that area too.
Well, that's enough said right there.
There are some difficult areas.
Can I say something?
Can you hit or anything, but you know.
Whenever each one of us give our opinions, I think that's what the makeup of this court is all about.
Yeah, it is.
It's gonna be five different opinions, and I, and I have different opinions than Chris or Mr. Pelt or whatever. But the reason I said that, uh, we, we can have different opinions and then go out of here and be friends. If you look at it like y'all just said. I would go for it too, because I've always been about what one gets, everybody else should get. But if you look at it like that, it would be the same difference as, uh, Judge Minton having an extra clerk down there, because they do more work, okay? So then Tim travels more as well as, as Ben. I've seen Ben's, uh, itinerary, his logs he puts out, and I mean, there's no doubt he has documentation. So if we look at it like that, I could, I could go for that as well.
Well, that may be the matrix that, I, I, I hesitate just for the constables have to start keeping logs. To justify, you know, I think, uh, but I think realistically, we as a court, like you said. We have differences of opinions, but I think we have to put fairness to, to a system. And this is really, and I've had people, I've had people in the Lumberton area. They have complained to me and said, look, y'all wanna save money, cut some of those JP's and constables. Well, what they don't realize is as soon as you do that, you're gonna start bringing those cases up here, and you're gonna start hiring some more deputies. To cover the areas that maybe constables are helping with now. These are difficult decisions, and, you know, I think the court has done a good job over the past years of staying together and trying to solve these little problems. That their headaches.
Gotta get you to elaborate a little bit more on the statement you just made.
Yes, sir, which one? Oh, you wasn't, you wasn't in there a while ago. That was brought up. It, it, I brought it up like last year, I'm always the bad guy. And we have different, that's, that's what I was saying, we have different opinions. The way they looked at voting to allow JP five to have an extra clerk is the same way they're looking at. Tim getting more money than the other constables, the way I. Tim getting more money than the other constables. The way I've always looked at it, everybody should be the same. I, I was voted down a while ago. I was against having the extra clerk. I don't, it doesn't matter now. But, uh, my point in bringing that up is if we look at it like we made that decision a while ago for JP five clerk. Then we can do the same.
How'd you make that decision?
Sir?
How'd you make that decision?
We, we all raised our hand on who was for it, who was against it and it was three to two.
No, your statement you just made was because they do more work.
I, that, no, that's, that's what they say. Yes. That's what they say is the justification for JP five having an extra clerk and the other JP's not having it. Is the volume of work that goes on in JP five's office. Is that correct?
Well, and, and Ken talked about.
I, I, I brought up this point and it's a point in Harden County. Things are divided on population, not by area. I have fifty-two percent of Harden County. In my commissioner precinct, I have two full JP's. And I have one, uh, cause I have Coos proper, I have one other JP. So basically I have three JP's in my commissioner precinct. Alvin in his commissioner precinct has one JP. So now, I get hit with, not my friends, my people say, hey, you've got three JP's in your precinct. We don't have a one in Lumberton. And what we're talking about is an issue in Lumberton. And I'm just trying to be aware and make the court aware that we need to keep this thing fair. And I would hate to see a movement start down in that area. That would say this court needs to get rid of two JP's.
Well, I, I think the point that.
Well, the point.
There's no doubt about it, it's in the city.
I'm, I'm putting words in Judge Shaw's mouth, but I think the point he is trying to show to the court is that. Don't confuse an increased revenue stream for more work. Bec- because, because Judge Shaw is, is at the jail every day doing something else. You know, whereas, uh, as Judge Minton is, is, is doing functions that, that bring in revenues, that doesn't mean that she necessarily does more work. But in that area, she probably does, you know, but in other areas, Judge Hawk, uh, probably does more work than she does in maybe magistrations or something like that. You know, so we're, we're all different but equal. And I think that's the point that you guys are trying to make. Counterpoint to, to, uh, Tim's situation is that if you did that, I mean, who's, you, you're, who's to say that the next constable would be as good? And as diligent as Tim?
Well, last year we cut a constable's car allowance. I need to go back and.
If I get out there this year, I, I go, I go with Donald and, uh, take it away, you know?
Uh, yeah, I'm just being devil's advocate.
And, and, and we did that to, to Commissioner Pelt, the constable over there, we cut his car allowance in half.
And I think that's really one of the things you have that ability to do, right? I think they're not doing the up to bar job to, to do.
Well, I, I'll reiterate, I don't think any elected official, any employee in Harden County getting the amount of money they deserve.
But we all knew what it was when we ran for the.
That's right. We knew what it was. I knew what I was getting. I knew I was taking on fifty-eight percent of the county at that time. I've never had a complaint about it. I also realized that. Down in the, the Lumberton area. That, that JP represents a high population of vote. Now, they may have a city judge also. But there's a lot of voters. And I do not want to see it get started in this county where we're pitting one part against the other. And there's already thoughts down there that they're not getting a fair share on these JP's.
Well, anything. I hear it all, I hear it all, all the time.
And I hear it all the time because I'm down in that JP precinct with part of my deal. And I think that, you know, we wanna keep this county cohesive. We don't wanna pit one community against another community. But there are times that the court has to make a decision to try to keep things, we can never keep things totally fair. It's impossible.
Right, cause we all know North Sylsby's the best, I mean.
My own last, uh, organizing the, the, uh, precincts. Precinct three now has, has all the apartments in Lumberton on, on the west side of sixty-nine. And, and we, we had, we had all this stuff down Wheeler Road and, 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 uh.
Oh, you're, you're talking about the way that the, uh.
Free district.
Redistricting?
Yeah.
Ways of body.
We got a bunch of, bunch of work that we've, we've been doing for.
Yeah.
Cause we didn't do a lot of, uh.
I guess my point though was Chris was talking about matrix. My point was, we set that a while ago with. If we're gonna go by work volume, then do the same with the constables.
Yeah. You mean the same with the JP's or the constables?
No, the constables. Well, you added, I mean, you kept a, a extra JP, uh, clerk in the JP's office based on.
Workload.
That, so we could do the same with the constables. I mean, i- if we want to save Tim and Ben, which I'm sure they do. Um, I've worked with both of them, uh, drive more than increase their car allowance based on that.
Well, what do we do about Constable Smith who serves quite a few more papers than the rest of them?
Well, that's the same.
I mean, that's the nature.
Comparison that we have here with our JP's. Who's to say that, just like Judge Ingram just brought up? That just because she, she brings in more revenue, they're doing more work. I mean, somebody's gonna have to decide all that.
And Constable Overstreet serves probably quite a few more papers than.
They serve most of the evictions coming out of your court. Probably out of all of, everybody together, you probably serve all, uh.
It'd be good to see a, on our end, instead of getting here every year, see a monthly report generated by everybody's office of what you did.
You, 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 you should have that, but then, you know, are you generating, asking for a catfight in the future by doing that?
No, but, but, but. For instance, for instance, for instance, we're all the, the offensive line. Blocking for the constables and the JP's. We're not against, we're on the same team.
Right.
All right, and if we're gonna go by matrix, and if we're gonna look at moving forward as a county. Then, then we're not pitting anybody against anybody, but I'm not sitting here with zero to look at. To make a judgment call because obviously it's already ruffled feathers and we've not even, we've not even made a decision.
I, I think some of the problem stems from the fact. We're, we're, we're good, but I think where we need to not have an issue is that constables and justice courts are not profit centers. The profit that you get from us is a bonus. We serve a function.
If they were profit centers, three or four of them would be gone.
Yeah.
They've never been.
Well, I mean, I, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with that point. I'm saying that they are not profit centers.
And that's what I have resisted on this court.
Well, then let's just.
Is that they're not profit centers, just like the sheriff's department is not a profit center.
Well, then I'd say the system we got is pretty good.
Is not a profit center.
Kinda where I'm going.
The county is not a profit center to start with.
Uh, I'm not saying it's you or viewing it that way. I'm saying when we start throwing numbers in our head, it, it does start to get adversarial. And, and we're not profits and we're not profit centers. She probably brings in a lot of traffic stuff. TJ does a ton of stuff at the jail that, that doesn't make profit for the county, but serves a necessary function. You know, and we're all just doing these functions that, that may not show up on report, but are necessary.
Right.
I, 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 it, I think it's very unfair what Nubbin said, that you use this deal about, uh, do more volume. And I'm not talking against it. I, I, I couldn't care less if she has two court, that's fine with me. I don't want two court clerks, but I don't have room for them.
She don't have two courts.
Okay, but when you say we gonna do it because they do more volume, you're talking about profit? And, and that's not necessarily true. Just because you have more volume doesn't mean that you do more work.
Well.
You're talking about tickets.
Well.
I bet they don't get, how many tickets a month? See, uh, and it takes, when somebody comes in my office to pay a ticket, it takes three minutes at the most.
Judge, uh, minute, was you there when this position was added to that office? Was you working there?
Original full-time position?
Yes.
No, sir. I was not.
What, do you know why it was added?
I can't answer that honestly, no, sir. Wayne may know he was the constable. I think at the time is when the, um, for debt claim cases went up. Credit card cases went up to ten thousand dollars and that meant that there was gonna be more of those filed in the office. Rather than, I'm assuming district court, so I can't say that.
Well, and that, that, that goes back to.
It's easy, Nubbin, why it went up, why it was added, three votes. They was saying three votes, you move the courthouse. Now, that's not really true, but, uh, it had three votes.
Well, but then, then, then maybe, you know, before we do anything, we determine a matrix, you know, uh, because what. What's, what's been argued against is, okay, well, you say this, but then why not this? Okay, and then it goes back to, let's not make it subjective at all. Let's say if we, if, if, if the constable wants a bump in his car allowance, then produce the documentation. Prior to coming to court that says, last year I put on forty thousand miles. And I did two thousand dollars worth of maintenance to my automobile. I changed the oil and it cost me this. And, and then this year, but, but what I'm saying, the system that we have is now sounding real good. Based on all the arguments that's been presented here this afternoon or this morning.
Well, when I, when I said, what you said doesn't make sense, when I said that. I was using that as an example of that's the matrix that we're gonna have for the JP's, then we would have it for the constables. I don't agree. No, sir. That's what I'm saying. I voted against it. I don't think it is either, but as collectively as a court, if we're gonna use that. Then we would use it with the.
And just to be clear, we didn't vote on anything. We, we showed our.
All the papers we serve goes through the sheriff's office. We get, we don't get any credit for serving it. So if you look at how many papers. Constable serves, it's not do four. And he might have served a hundred, but all, all, all the credit goes to the sheriff's office.
Tim, what, what Miss, what Miss Warner said, what she said, I've been out there, I worked with you, I know that's correct. And you and Ben, I know how y'all work, but if you, if you look at it from a, from a standpoint. There's a lot of people out there too that says, well, he's going above and beyond what a constable's duties are, you know? And we give you money to do that, then they're gonna say something about that as well. Does that make sense?
I don't like any sense. Any, I mean, it doesn't matter if you give me nothing. I don't care. I'm gonna keep working.
Right, and I know that.
And, you know, I'm just asking for some help. Do you either help or you can't? You know, Billy Thomas has told me, come in here and ask for it and if, uh, you don't get it, don't get feeling hurt. You know, I've got a wifi card, I got a, uh, uh, telephone. I ain't never, ever charged the county for nothing. And miss that box of red and blue lights. Ain't nobody give me nothing, nothing. And I mean, I go way beyond out of my pocket.
All I was going by on that is whenever Red took over, they handed him a box of red and blue glasses.
Box too, but it went right to the, uh, person because it was all out of.
Yeah, and the ones he's got now, I bet he paid for them. Those are, those are.
Oh, I don't know. I.
The only thing that's in my car that ain't paid for is that, uh, uh, lap, lap, uh, and that's it.
Are all our constables still serving papers?
Yes, sir.
With exception.
I'm gonna go back and address that in just a minute.
Okay, so Mark's now serving papers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, this became a very emotional issue last year.
Yes, sir.
But, you know, you know, like I said, if, uh, if you feel like you're out there working and you, and you need something, you gotta be up on the front row asking for it. You either gonna get it or you ain't. You know, just keep on.
Well, I, I think it's, and I agree with Chris wholeheartedly and with Nubbin, if you could establish a matrix. It's very difficult to establish a mathematical matrix that will make everything fair.
Yep.
But like in Ben's situation, if you travel the roads up in North Sylsby. And if any of you that haven't had the pleasure of going, if you go out there and make some runs around Big Ticket Retreat. And the two mile Liberty County road that you have to go down to get into Big Ticket Retreat. Then you will see the necessity for a car allowance. We have some constables, I imagine, that have very little dirt road in their precinct, right?
Yeah, bullshit.
Bill runs his son ahead. Bill, I, I wasn't gonna leave you out. I was coming back too. If you go down to Honey Island, Honey Island and up through Little Rock and stuff, there's a lot of difference in the quality of the roads.
I stopped three times last week out there on county roads.
Yeah.
I hope it was Chris's precinct, not mine.
On which road? That's probably my road. That's probably my road, huh? Yeah, that's probably my road. Or it may have been Chris's. You might have been down Hendrix Road or.
Hendrix is old, man. It's, it's a nice road.
Oh, it is. See, that's a good thing about redistricting. I gave you Hendrix Road, didn't I?
And we, we certainly improved. Right. That's Cherry, that's Cherry Hill, isn't it?
Where are we at, Judge?
We're still way back on the travel allowance line item. What is the consensus of the court on the twelve hundred dollar increase being requested?
Twelve hundred?
Twelve hundred dollars a year, yeah. Everybody's for that? You know, uh.
What we gonna do for Ben?
Same thing.
We'll go back to, let's just do it right now.
I, I thought Ben, I was thinking Ben was Lumberton.
Bill, I mean, would you run evictions or whatever? I mean, what, what, what are you? Do you need increase? I mean, you're here.
I'm not, I, I don't yet. I don't run a day. I got a day precinct for a mile ago. Thought I tried Tim. But, uh, no, I'm fine.
Uh, Tim, on your office supplies line item, you left it the same. Radio repair, you went up from five hundred to seven fifty. Could we keep that at five hundred?
That's fine. I get them rocky talkies need to be reprogrammed unless you know, you can find that guy that can program them for.
We'll get it taken care of. They, uh, they're gonna be reprogramming your radio later this year anyway and also, uh, precinct four.
The reason on them radios, I listen to Ben and him, we don't have Liberty County and Tyler County and they were involved in a pursuit. Uh, six months ago and the guy was shooting at the deputies and his, his, we don't even ca- can't even hear Tyler County. They were trying to talk back.
You can't hear Tyler County, but you should have Liberty County in your radio.
Yeah.
Tyler would be.
But Tyler County's on VHF. We don't have, we don't have access to them.
You know, they need it, you know, they need it. You know, it was got pretty sheer, sure for, uh.
On the, uh, printing, you left it at seventy-five? The miscellaneous, you went up from four fifty to five hundred? What was, uh?
Had spent zero so far this.
What is the printing? We, we, we've, we've been zeroing that out on the constables.
I, I, my opinion is, I don't, we don't need, my, I don't need no money because that Leo's money every two years will build up. And leaving some to travel to Sam Houston and.
Well, what about on printing though?
Printing, printing.
I don't need no printing. Got a box of cars later. That's, you don't even have to die for it.
On the miscellaneous expense, do we leave it at four fifty?
I just spray paint my number on the tree over there.
What is that for? I mean, what?
Miscellaneous. I just matched it with the other.
What I, oh, okay, so I see the digital's been spent there this year.
Yes, sir.
Tim, what do, what do, what do you code the miscellaneous?
Last lines.
Everybody's got miscellaneous.
Uniforms.
Okay, so we're, we're leaving the same everywhere.
Okay, okay. On, uh, equipment expense, we're, we're doing four fifty. Tim, you requested five hundred, four fifty, okay?
That's fine.
On precinct twos, um, his miscellaneous is three ninety and you wanted me to match these other budgets with precinct two.
And you said you was gonna take care of Mark on that since he's serving papers.
We'll make it four fifty.
Precinct two's four fifty, so.
Yes, ma'am. On Constable precinct four, I had just made the comment earlier, I would take care of that budget, um, and match it. Uh and match it to uh, I think Bill's budget. Uh last year, his uh vehicle allowance was cut by four hundred dollars a month. Uh he and the sheriff met in my office back in January, and he's been serving papers since then, and. As far as I know, he's still continuing to serve the papers through the, that come through the sheriff's office for precinct four. And I told him that uh in the budget workshop, we would increase his allowance back to the fourteen-four.
Sounds good.
So it's still, it's gonna match Bill's budget, uh but I wanted to bring bring that up and let everybody on the court know that that line item will be increased. Anything else on Constable Moody's budget?
What about a wifi for him?
I don't worry about that. I just have my personal plan.
Well, I mean, I'm I'm gonna voice it. I think that we ought to be uniform. If you won't pay for it, the court agrees to it, it's your business. But I think if if it's if it's a county expense, county ought to be paying for it, especially for the next guy coming here. I I I'm with you on that, but you know, I mean, if you can pay my fee, you can pay, you can pay your sickco bill.
Well, I wanna get you, you're just telling me to get up on the front and ask for it.
Hey, Ken, when I get stuck, do I tell it to the commissioner of the, got the road or?
Just depending on which commissioner it is.
It's all Ken Bell.
We 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 had, we had trucks up at Big Thinkin' Retreat four days last week pulling them out.
Hey, Bill, any of the JP's or constables have anything else they'd like to address the court about with regards to the budget?
I don't think y'all ever voted on the gas, do you?
On what?
We don't do votes, we do consensus. We 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 do consensus.
You're good. Well, I had no idea we'd be here this long, so I apologize that we're here as long as we are, but uh.
You was gonna say something about. Constable or or something just a minute ago?
You got ESP? I'm sorry, what what was it about?
I don't know. They got you, you're just calling me, that's right.
He was gonna bring up JP uh Constable four that he didn't address a while ago.
Right, and I did, I did take care of that.
Yeah, that was Mark's situation with the. Serving papers.
So if there's not anything further, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn? So stand adjourned.
Okay, uh here.